I have the following, thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this season that we rejoice and celebrate. We thank you for Jesus. Lord, we thank for each and every person here today that they're here, Lord, to support, recognize, and try to govern this school board that we work in. Lord, we thank you for all you do for us, and we just ask you to help us all to make decisions based on our hearts and what is right in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Randy Rentsch.
Here.
Beau Barton.
Here.
Melissa Fowler, here. Erin Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass, here. Eric Castles.
Here.
Johnny Fallon, here.
All right, item D is executive committee report. Right?
We're doing all the checks. Everything seems to be in order. Sales taxes were down again this period, a seven percent, little over seven percent compared to this time last year. People shopping at home for the holidays.
All right, thank you, Randy. All right, item D is review and voting approval of November 9th, 2023 board meeting minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Week Sale. Second.
All in favor, Sal? All right, item C is recognized Terry Gerard as the December Employee of the Month. Scott Walker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me again tonight, Ms. Terry. When we do this employee of the month, we ask for coworkers to send in something that they might want to say about the person that's one in. Usually we have one or two people that'll send something in. Ms. Terry, you had nine different people send in something about you, and some of the words they used were great attitude, patient, hard worker, professional, organized, smile on her face. One coworker summed up your attitude by very simply saying this, she is the best. And then finally, Terry always has a positive attitude and continually lifts others up. She has a kind soul and is a giving person. She takes care of many tasks that are not in her job description and never complains about a thing. Terry is well-loved by her parents at Kelly Hill childhood because they know that she's like a watchdog at the front desk. I don't know if y'all have ever tried to get into one of these schools, but it's possible. Nobody is above having to show their ID and sign in, not even the sheriff. Ms. Terry is a selfless person and helps wherever she sees that someone needs it and doesn't wait for someone to ask for help. Please help and congratulate Ms. Terry Gerard.
Thank you. We're blessed to have you on our team.
All right, item D is recognized the Coal Parish Junior High Student Council.
So I told y'all, last month, we had the high school student council, and so we invited the junior high council to come and speak with you. So if you're here at junior high, y'all come on in. Okay, all right. Good.
We have a basketball game tonight, so a lot of the kids are there.
Yeah. So tell us about your student council and what you do.
So we basically represent the classes, like in the, we vote on the things such as PDIS, AR awards, sometimes how we spend money, sometimes not, and we also fundraise.
Can you talk about the fundraiser that y'all just did? Because I actually got to be in the meeting when they came up with the idea, and y'all, I was blown away. How many are on the student council?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven students on the student council, and so I went and visited. I had this script of things I was going to talk about. I never opened my mouth because they went to town and I actually saw this idea come. Was it your idea? I thought so. Tell them about it.
So it was like November around that, and I realized it was coming up to Christmas, so I realized it'd be a good idea to have ornaments with it, so.
So if you'll open up your Christmas packages, you'll see the ornaments that the junior high student council came up with the idea to sell those as a fundraiser, and what are you raising money for?
Uh, the GOGA ball pit.
A GOGA ball pit at the school, so. It was.
So have you guys had a chance to talk to Ms. Hillstead about the cell phone policy? What do you think about the cell phone?
Well, I mean, it's good to still listen, but I just feel like it does work, but it's not as good as it is.
Sounds good. Anything else? Ms. Hillstead, you want to talk a little bit about how the committee?
So each homeroom votes on a student committee member, so it's a very diverse group, and they all go back. Once we have our meeting at club schedule every month, they go and they meet with me and Ms. Watts, and we discuss, you know, things that they want at school, things they want to see to better our school. And so one of the things that they wanted to do was to put in a permanent GOGA pit. That, I don't know if you know what that is, but it is like a round pit that's made out of wood, and they go in and they play with the ball. It's a church game, and they go in and they throw the ball, kind of like dodgeball, but it's like at their feet, and they can play and bring other players back in. And so we put up a temporary one, and they loved it so much that when we discussed what was our main goal for the year, they said we want a permanent GOGA pit. So, and they also helped with doing the halls, decorating our halls, and they put together treats for the teachers. They always want to do something for others, and so we wrote, you know, pine notes to the teachers. And I just listen to them and find out what they want from us, you know, from us, and to also make part of the decision-making at the school, so it's great.
Future leaders, we're proud of y'all.
I love how y'all are bringing everybody in to see the school too.
Yes, yes, we had the preschool and the head start. It was great.
He's here for support.
One, two, three.
All right, item E is student cell phone policy update from Ms. Hillstead and Ms. Wallstead.
You want me to go first? Um, so once we implemented the new plan of the major referral and the contract with the parents, we have only had two cell phone violations all year long, which is amazing. My teachers make sure that they're either, they tell them it's either turned off or in your backpack, or if they don't trust themselves, they can put it in the cell gel in class. They're not allowed to put their, bring their cell phone to the bathroom with them. And so just having everybody on board has helped tremendously with it, and we told the students from the beginning that this wasn't, this could be a temporary situation, that, you know, further action could be taken. So we wanted to make sure if you wanted to keep your cell phones available for you for extracurriculars, then we needed to do what we needed to do to keep that in place. So it's been really successful.
Everybody has pretty much bought into it?
Yes.
Do you have anybody that kind of like refused to give up the phone, nothing yet?
Students wise? I mean, I have in the past. We have.
Just recent?
Maybe, maybe one of the two, but nothing, when they came to the office and we explained the policy and had the parent come in and meet and discuss the contract, we haven't had any other issues.
Okay, that's just kind of what I'm worried about, if it isn't working, if it just needs to be amended, moved until whenever, let it be in full effect.
Same, ours is, it's been better. We have more referrals than you do, but what I like about it is that the policy is current. So I think because it's so current, the teachers feel like everything is only like air pods, cell phones, it wasn't outdated, so I feel like it's enforceable because you can say this was just passed, and you know that we're going to be supported when we have to take a phone or something like that. So we appreciate having a policy in there in force, and the teachers feel like they have the right to say, hey, this just passed, you know, they take the phone and listen to the office. So it's been successful. We have more referrals than you, but I think it's because teachers are aware, and before they were just, you know, like last year, before they was kind of, I think, looking over it, and now that they know it's being enforced, that they're enforcing it. So we haven't had very many repeat offenders once they have it taken. They're like, you know, they know the second one, they have to sign the contract, this is about to get taken again, it's a 20-day lockup, no voter option. So because of that, they're like, we haven't had any repeat offenders. So this, it's been working well. I've been happy with it.
Nick, I think as a result of that, based on what we talked about earlier today with AI and all that, probably March, April, May, we'll look at it again to stay current with what technology is, so we can kind of, since you're saying that since it's current, it appears to be working better, especially at you guys' school, which is the hope that we had. So it's not only at general, I don't think we have to, because we said until December, but I think it should be retroactive to continue to move forward, so I don't think we have to do anything tonight. But congratulations on it, because I thought it would be more of a problem, but since it's not, I'm glad that you guys are, you know, working on it, but you don't need us to tell you.
Thank you. All right, item F is review and voting on timber sale.
Okay, we kind of debated around a little bit already on over the, by tax, where I sent you the information, so y'all wouldn't just not be sitting there. There's only one bid that we have to worry about. The other bid is not related to Washita, it's not related to Callow Parish at all. So the only bid that is relevant is item one, it's for a section of land that's in Washita Parish that we share with them, and the minimum bid they were borrowing was $985,000. I got a bid of $987,098.87. I don't quite know why they did it quite that, but they did. So, I mean, it's up to y'all to vote in favor or against it, and I think y'all saw that there will be replanning, they're going to hold out $200,000 for, that's for the purposes and whatever the difference is after that replanning takes place, they'll pay us, you know, get the split, and they're obviously going to hold it out more than they probably expect payout. So we'll get another check probably three years from now.
So students, to make sure I get this right, part of this property is ours, right?
None of the property is in Callow Parish. The township, which is 36, uh, 36 square miles, 30 sections, part of that township is in our parish, part of it's in their parish. Section 16 itself is in Washita. So, and anytime you have a township that crosses boundaries, you split the revenue based on how many sections of land are in each parish.
So somebody else is basically bidding whatever for us. I guess what I'm saying is I would feel more comfortable if we had somebody like Randy Garrett that was involved on a day-to-day basis talking with these people. I just, I'm not comfortable with somebody else doing something for us.
We advertise in Washin, Washin will advertise, and they're making, I think it's citizen up there, and so I mean, it's open for bid, whoever wants the bid.
Okay.
I actually talked to the forester, one of the foresters that screws timber, and he told me that they came back to Washita, told them on this particular section to have a minimum bid of $800. So for it to come in, mine, of course, but then again, he said Washita would pay our price, they put it at $985,000. And they came back even higher than that, so I feel pretty comfortable with that.
Well, I know David May was real familiar with his property. And he and I, at some point, have talked about it, and his concern is that we get the most that we could get rather than somebody else doing for us. I just have an issue with us not having any conversation other than accepting what somebody's giving me. I just don't subscribe to that type of, you know, behavior, but if you guys feel that it's fair, I'm okay with it.
Just judging by the people I've talked to, I would think.
We're giving about $1,508, that's pretty good for what timber's going for.
And the budget is, that we adopted back in September, that was at $300,000, and that was looking sort of, that was based on Washita saying, you know, if you split 300, it might be more.
So it'd be split?
Right. So we're looking closer to $358,000, assuming all the numbers hold.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor? Thank you, David. Item G is accountability update.
Okay. I have on the screen for you. You should have a copy, you should have a copy in your folder of the slides, like two on each page. Basically, the first slide, we're just looking at kind of comparing. We have our 2023 SPS scores for all the schools in their later grade, and then on there we have what we had in 2022. So we're looking at the high schools in 96.1 in '22, and then we're 96.5 in '23, so that was four tenths of an increase. The junior high went from a 65 to a 68.3, so they grew 3.3 points. And then we saw some decrease in the elementary school. Columbia went from an 80.5 to a 73.4. Grayson went from a 63.7 to a 59.5, and Union went from a 58.5 to a 54.3. But overall, the district grew .2 points from a 79.8 to an 8. And, you know, scores are getting later and later. It used to, we'd have scores by October 1st, and now it's later in November before we're even getting anything, so hopefully that trend will go back. Any questions on those?
I got a question, Kristi. So it's a constant occurring thing, and it was when I was here. What factors, I mean, I know our elementary teachers do a great job, I know our junior high teachers do a great job, and I know our high school teachers do a great job. So, but we jumped from D's and C's to A. So what are we doing at the high school? I mean, is there extra things going on that to benefit the scores that Katie doesn't have and that our elementary principals don't have?
There's a lot more at the high school that we need.
So we have a benefit of being able to go up higher?
So the high school has, I mean, high school kids have so much that have to go into it. Like the elementaries, you're looking at your assessment index, which is LEAD, and a growth, kind of a progress, I was thinking growth, you have a progress grade for kids that showed growth within, from one year to the next. So that's the only thing they have, other than now we have interest and opportunities, which is only 5%. So they're working with basic test scores. When you get to the junior high, you have test scores plus DCAI, which is by the time a kid ends their ninth grade year, how many credits do they earn? And so if they have six or more credits, they get the full points. And so they have that that goes into theirs. When you hit the high school, you have assessment, you have progress, you have ACT index, which includes ACT and workies. You have the strength of diploma index, which includes how kids graduate. Do they graduate with a basic diploma? Do they graduate with a diploma plus a credential? Do they pass a CLUP test? They get all of those points. And then we also have a cohort graduation rate, how many kids graduated that started the ninth grade. And so the high school has a lot of that that goes into their score that pulls the assessment up.
I wouldn't necessarily want to post this, but in my mind, or Nikki, I would like to see what our high school scores are.
We're going to show you.
Before you are, before we get to that, because it's a constant, these ladies down there at that elementary, I know what they're doing down there. They're working their tails off, and it gets, and you see these numbers, and it looks like something's going on here. It's not fair to them.
It's just the way the state set up, that kind of built the system, and the elementaries just don't have a lot to work with. They have basically assessment, and that's it. On the next slide, basically it's just notes, kind of a synopsis of all of that. Again, we grew as a district .2 points. The high school was an A for the sixth consecutive year, but they were also recognized as an equity honoree, meaning they're subgroups. Students with disabilities, students, you know, broken down by race, students economically disadvantaged, their subgroups grew, so they were equity honoree. CBHS showed growth in ACT index, strength of diploma, and the cohort grad rate. We went up in that for that year. The junior high, like we said, grew 3.3 points, and overall, even though they grew, they remain in that comprehensive intervention required CIR for their subgroup performance. So their subgroups in students with disabilities and African-Americans were still a little low. But that qualifies them for funding, because they are a CIR school, they get extra funding to help their efforts to try to improve. Same thing for Union Central, they remain in CIR, but again, we also get funding for that to continue their improvement efforts and to try to grow. The next page is what you're talking about, both. We're looking at, this basically takes everybody in the Northeast Louisiana region, kind of our region, region A, and compares us with where everybody falls. So when you look at Coal Parish, you see where, you know, West Carroll and Washita So when you look at Colwell Parish, you see where, you know, West Carroll and Washita, they flip-flop back and forth, they're usually above us. But we're usually, I know for the past four or five years, we've been number three when we look at our whole region. And when you look at what's pink, what's pink is those districts that are ahead of us. So one of the main things that we have to work on is progress. And I know the schools have already started that work, because they're choosing priority students, students that they see that they need to move from approaching basic to basic, and from basic to mastery, that they can get there. And so that's something that we've already started to work on. But when you look across, you see the high school, from that high school index across, all of that's high school scores, just on the high school. So from the high school assessment index, the progress index, you see the ACT, strength of diploma, cohort grad rate, and the graduation rate. All of that goes into the high school score. Whereas when you look at the elementaries, you're back here on K through eight assessment and K through eight progress. And then the junior high gets DCAI.
So she called out the pink, that's where, and that's where we're looking, is who's outperforming us in those areas, and so we highlight those pink. But if you flip that, all the white means we're outperforming. So, I mean, it's different ways to look at the data, and you don't really know until you start comparing to other, you know, places, how are we performing? And our work is, we've got to work on progress for K eight, high school assessment index, which is the high school LEAK test, and then the high school progress index. Those are the real areas we've got to focus on.
But if you look at K eight as far as assessment, I mean, we're holding our own, you know, up there at the top. Um, and the high school on ACT, we only had two districts that were above us in the ACT index. Strength of diploma, we're killing it. And then our cohort graduation rate, we only had one district that beat us in that. So basically, we are putting out students at the high school that are leaving with dual enrollment hours, CLIP tests that give them college credit, and certifications that they can use to, you know, get a job, earn with themselves. So, you know, the high school hitting all those marks. We've just got to get assessment up. Any questions on that?
How much does the cohort graduation rate index affect our score? Because we're beating people by fifty, and so by sixty.
It's twenty-five percent.
What are we doing that they're not?
They are not either graduating students on time or getting them the extra credentials, the E...
A regular diploma is worth a hundred points.
Yeah, a regular diploma is a hundred. But then anytime you go up from that, say, we get a kid certified in EMR, that's a statewide credential, and we get a hundred and ten.
If I was some of these other parishes, I'd be calling you on that.
They do. Regularly.
Christie's the guru.
They do. Um, but, you know, and then say they get a dual enrollment credit in a core class, plus they get a statewide certification, then they're a hundred and fifteen. If we can get them to pass a CLIP test, they're a hundred and fifty. And so, one year, we have fifteen CLIP tests.
So you get fifteen kids who graduated with an extra fifty points tagged on.
So that's a good deal. Um, and then the last scale, it's kind of like the boom, boom, boom. This, our SPS letter grade scale was supposed to change in twenty-two, but because of COVID and everything that happened, and everybody getting back in the room with taking tests and getting scores back up, they pushed it back. So the new SPS letter grade shift will be this year with twenty-four scores. And you see that we'll have to have a ninety-five to have an A, and an eighty to have a B, a sixty-five to have a C, and a fifty to have a B. So five points, it basically shifted five points in every grade.
The target's moving.
Yeah, our target's moving.
What was the reason for that?
That we're supposed to get to a hundred, a hundred and fifty by twenty-twenty-five.
Those shifts were planned back in what year?
Oh, gosh, that's been a long time. They basically, because it was twenty-sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, back in twenty-sixteen, they passed this long-term, you know, we're going to do this, and then we're going to up the ante here, and we're going to up the ante here. And because of COVID, they shifted it back.
What is the progress index on K through eight?
Basically, they take the kid's scores, say they look at their third grade English score, how close is that kid to mastery by eighth grade? And so they move that, you know, this kid should grow this many points every year. And so if a student meets their growth target, then you get so many points in the progress index. If they don't meet their growth target, then they put them in a pool with their peers. And basically, if the peers meet the growth target, I think basically is how it is, then they get points for that. So it's basically how do they grow each year? Because mastery is the goal. And so for elementary, we're looking toward eighth grade. And then for high school, we're looking toward, you know, the EFCs and all the tests that they take over. So they hope they grow basically.
It is individualized.
Yeah.
And it's a good thing. It's only twenty-five percent of elementary and junior high scores. But it does, you see, you may have a kid who can't get to basic and get an eighty, you only get eighty points for basic anyway. You don't get a hundred points to get to mastery. But you may have a kid who can get to basic, and so you're taking a zero there. But if they did grow and meet their target, then you do get points for that. So it's helping you grow, any growth for any student. And so at that point, to kind of, you know, tie into what we're going to talk about, that's why we have priority students, and we identify kids who are very close to the next level. And we really hone in on what can we do to help grow these kids at each school. Good question. Same thing, because I want to lead into the next part. Because what I want to make sure that you as board members and that you as public know that we're not at a place we want to stay. We are proud of the growth that we have made, but we're also concerned about the places where we didn't grow. And so I want you to know where we are moving forward, that we're not sitting back and just letting this take place. Every school has written an action plan based on their growth. And you actually have copies of those action plans in a separate folder under your folder? Nope? Nope, okay, didn't go.
We dropped them.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right. So you have an action plan, yeah, that looks like this for every school that's going to be communicated. And so with that action plan, they're all aligned to our district initiatives. And so I wanted to remind you, you know, of our district initiatives. We wrote our district strategic plan. We're in year three of it, right?
Nope.
And so those initiatives are embedded in everything we do. It's all a part of these action plans. It's a part of surveys that we have just sent out to teachers to gauge how we are dealing with these initiatives. And so we took the initiatives and said, how can this initiative help me raise my test scores? How can it help me grow my SPS? And so the first one is equitable access to high-quality instruction. And what we as a district have decided is we need to shift what we call the cognitive lift to our students. We know that we have the right curriculum in place. We know we have assessments in place. We've got to help our kids do the thinking, and how can they do the math? How can they do the math so that they're actually able to problem solve when I get on that test? And that's not good English, when I take the test. How am I able to problem solve because my teacher has helped me throughout the year? And so there's a focus on shifting the cognitive lift to the students, so that they're doing the thinking. The second one is how do we engage our families and community members? And so how's that going to improve our school performance score? Well, we've got to engage stakeholders. We've got to engage our parents. And so they've got some activities they're going to talk about for a little bit on how they're going to try to engage parents. Another, you know, that we've got to do is we've got to engage students in setting their own goals, so that the students take ownership for our learning. And so we've, we're talking with students, we're meeting with students, and we're saying, how do you know what kind of work you're doing in class? You know, do you know what you're going to score, and how do you know? And so that they're setting goals and taking some ownership for their own learning. Am I doing mastery-level work, or is the work I'm doing approaching basic? And how do I get from approaching basic to basic? Or how do I get from basic to mastery? So that's our second initiative. The third is diverse and talented team, social emotional wellness of our teachers, and how do we make the teachers feel like they're a part of a school team? And so how's that going to impact your test scores? Well, if we provide knowledge and skills to teachers and our paraprofessionals and support them in implementing their efforts, then that's going to translate into improved test scores, because the teachers are supported in the right things. And then how do we celebrate those successes, the big ones and the little ones, with our teachers, so that they know that they're on the right track and that they feel like they have a supportive leadership team? And then the last initiative is on social emotional supports for our students. And a lot of people don't understand why it's important for us to care about our kids and their social emotional well-being. Well, if they're not in class, they're not learning. And so we've got to have strategies in place where we're helping our kids stay in class. And so we've implemented some restorative practices with Ms. Merritt's team, so that we can increase that time. And then also just every student, so they feel like they belong, they feel like teachers care about them, that their leaders care about them. And when they know their teachers care about them and love them and support them, then they work harder because they believe in themselves. So I would like for, you know, to take a few minutes to allow, if that's okay with y'all, for the principals, since they're here, if you have any questions. I think that, you know, they've got some real plans in place that they kind of want to highlight. So you, are we, you want to just let them talk, or you want to ask questions? They're ready, they're ready, they're ready to tell you how they're going to move forward.
Well, moving forward with these plans, these action plans?
These action plans.
That's what, y'all, y'all looked at all this, and y'all decided how y'all are going to move forward?
They wrote them, we did not write them for them, yeah. We met last Monday, last Monday, Ms. Wells sat down with them, and we all, we realized we have been figuring out their test scores for them. And so we sat down and gave them, she gave them and taught them how to actually plug in the numbers and see how those scores impact this letter grade. And so the morning was spent with her figuring it out, and then the afternoon was spent writing an action plan for how I, as a leader, am going to grow my score. And that's what you have as that final product.
Nikki, you know, you guys were invited here specifically to do that. So, I mean, just go on and tell us what your action plan is, to make sure that the public is aware that you guys know exactly where we at. You're doing everything that you guys need to do. You need the parents to buy into this, because you need parent participation and all those other things. So the teamwork that's already been established, you guys already aboard, and you're just here tonight to give us the input, so we can be able to relay this information out to everybody. And I don't want nobody thinking I'm sick or crazy, because I'm not asking the question that I usually ask. But I've already met with you guys, and I'm very satisfied with what you have told me with the principals and the directors. Appreciate the superintendent arranging that, because I wanted to know specifically where we were at and what we were doing to get to another place. And I'm very satisfied with what you told me. And I think it's all fair that the board take it upon themselves to do what I did, which is come and talk to you guys. I think you, today, you indicated that you want to invite board members to the school so they can ask and do whatever it is that they want to do, because we all need to know what's going on, so that information can be given to those who deserve it, which is the public and the kids. So I think we have a plan, we have an action, we have action, and we have something that we can execute. And speaking for me, I'm satisfied with everything that you guys told me today.
Feel like the two-minute version?
Yeah.
Three-minute version.
Two to three-minute version, and how about we start from K and move our way up to high school? Does that sound good? Okay, all right, so listen.
Yes, so I am the principal of the K-one building.
You gotta stand up and let the student...
So I am the principal of the K-one building. And so I do invite any of you to come and see any of the things that we are about to talk about. We're used to different people, the teachers are used to different people coming in the classroom, so it will not be a shocker to them. But just some of the things that I wanted to talk about, and we have a new curriculum this year. And the curriculum we've had in the past has not been a lot of literacy, a lot of phonics skills. So I feel like with the K-one students, where they're going to get that great phonics foundation. So we have a phonics supplement called HECKERTY, and it's all about movement and where they're able to break words apart. So new curriculum definitely is going to help. The teachers are loving the new curriculum. At first, of course, they were worried, because it wasn't like the old one. But once they got into it and started teaching it, I think we have a huge buy-in, and they're really seeing students progressing faster this year than they ever have before. Mr. Glass talked today about the difference in an interventionist and an integrationist. And I know he was like, I don't even know.
And I don't think anybody else will know.
Yes, and so I want to talk about that a little bit, because...
And tell them what they do.
I will. And so the interventionist is, works with students. And so basically, at the beginning of the year, they take them a literacy assessment called DIBELS. And any student that is not benchmarked, which means, you know, where they're supposed to be when they enter school, they are put in a pod of students, or a pod, and they are worked with on their skills that they have not benchmarked on, or they have not made progress on. And so this is a small group. And so she pulls them, she works with them, she progress monitors them. And then we have a test three times a year. And so she works with students. She even coaches some of our teachers on phonics skills and how to teach those. So not only is she benefiting the students, she's benefiting some of our new teachers. Then we have an integrationist. Our integrationist is more like our teacher's coach, like a lead teacher, somebody that goes in the classroom, they do model lessons for the teachers, they give in-the-moment feedback, like if they're in, you know, teaching and they're struggling in a content area, they may, you know, go in and just sit and observe, take notes. They do coaching cycles, where it's a three-week cycle, where they go in, they observe, they try to figure out what the teacher needs the most help on, they give feedback, they implement, the teacher implements that, and then go back and give more feedback. So that's like a three-week cycle. So that's the difference in the two, and we could not do it without them. And I know Ms. Furio comes in, and she's a huge part of our intervention piece. And what she does is she comes in, and we look at our data after we do the progress monitoring. And we say, okay, is this a whole-school problem? Are all of the first-grade students struggling with this? Is this a class problem, or just the students in this class? Or is it a student problem? And when we do that, we can really pinpoint like what areas we need to work on. And so she does that a lot, and so that's what our interventionists do. But we have a lot of things going on that we do, news, like talking about like the teachers and having the shout-outs and things like that, and helping them, you know, understand their data and understand where they are as far as their teaching skills, and providing them more feedback. The data dives this year, where we just go in and we sit down with extra student work. They bring their tests in, and this has been some aha moments, where they bring their tests in in a pod of teachers that's planning, and they're like, oh, my student really struggled on number three, I wonder why? You know, and so really talking specifically about their content that they're teaching and why their students struggled. Oh, I explained it this way, oh, I didn't think about giving that example. And so the teachers are actually sitting there with the coach and talking about where their misconceptions are, where the students are misunderstanding. And so we have a lot of great things that, you know, that we're implementing this year. We have an accelerate time, where it's thirty minutes in our pods. When I say pods, it's like three classes. They are sectioned into low, middle, and high. And each teacher, we did it where, you know, each teacher took the content area that they felt more comfortable with, and working with those students. They do it for thirty minutes, it's a stop and drop with their pod, nothing else is going on but what those students need to work on. And we're seeing great progress. And I'm seeing great conversations in the hall, hey, your student, da-da-da-da, he is really doing well, we may need to move him up, you know, in another, you know, section. And so we have a lot of great intentional things going on now.
And Kim, as a director, that's something that you co-sign and buy into supporting with regards to getting from where we at to where we need to be. That's something that you, all you guys have to work together on, and feel like it's showing a positive benefit.
I get to pop in on these common plannings, and they're amazing. And just to hear the conversation and the collaboration between the teachers, and just like she said, those aha moments, oh, well, I must not have taught that very effectively, because my students didn't perform, so tell me what you did. You know, we're not telling them anything, they're coming to, they're reflecting. They're coming to, they're reflecting and coming to their own conclusions on what the actions they need to take.
And it's a line of communication between the principal.
And then, so, integrationists, those are the Title I integration, they use their Title I funds and they, it's something that I teach, and the higher program is a teacher, teaching of a teacher.
So, that's something that we need.
So, Ms. Wiley's program pays for those teacher-coaches, the integrations.
So, you feel like it's money well spent?
Well...
Well, and the reason why I'm asking this, again, marketing campaign because it seems to be that some people don't understand, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I think when we have the opportunity to explain what it is we're doing and why we're doing it and how it's benefiting your kid, I think that's when we should seize the moment, which is in this public forum, to make sure that everybody understands that even though we may be where we're at, it's not like we're comfortable being here, it's not like we want to be here. So, we do have plans put in place to move forward. So, I'd just like to clear the air with the misconceptions that often float around with street commitments.
And to piggyback off of that, you know, the elementary level doesn't have an assistant principal and so, we kind of deal with everything. And so, there's no way to effectively run the building and take care of 19 teachers in a day's time if we didn't have that person there to come and divide and conquer my building. Second, third grade, we don't have a lot of behavior issues, so I'm not tied up doing that. So, I am able to be in the classrooms a lot more, but there's no way I can effectively be in that kind of classrooms every day, all day, you know.
You can?
You know, if I spent this many years, it's just such... And I did want to start by saying, you know, when we got the numbers and I sat down with Ms. McCann and she slid it to me and I saw the red, I just went, and it didn't feel good, but it took a moment to feel the feeling of, "Oh, my gosh, you know, poor me." And then, I thought, "Mm-mm, we've got to do something about this." And so, after we did our walk-in talk, I mean, my wheels started turning and I immediately started thinking, "Okay, what can I really fix this? Like, this is not okay." I did expect to take a little bit of a dip with new administration, new, we had several new teachers last year, some brand-new teachers and tested grades. I did expect to take a dip, but, you know, still it doesn't feel good. And so, before we were asked to write an action plan, I already had my action plan going. And so, it was easy to kind of fill in the graphic that we did because I'd already started working on some things. Ms. Baker, which is my integrationist, she and I met the following week and I just said, "We've got to get our wheels turning." It took us a week to kind of put our thoughts together. And so, our main focus, I think, for second and third grade should be on literacy because we haven't had that strong literacy curriculum in the past. Our students are very, very weak in that area, therefore, they struggle in all areas. And when we asked the teachers, you know, after we started, my wheels started turning and I started asking the teachers so that we can have their buy-in on, what their take on all this was, you know, even the math teachers were like, "They just can't read." You know, third grade math problems are word problems, they can't read. It's not that they can't compute the math, it's that they can't read. And so, that's kind of where the literacy push for us started and my wheels started turning there. So, I said, "Well, how do we fix that?" And so, you know, the new curriculum that Ms. Smith talked about is amazing and wonderful. We're still going to have a gap until we've got those third grade students that have come through C K L A and Hegarty. So, we're still going to have a little bit of extra work there to do to try to catch those kids up and close that gap more quickly. But we implemented accelerate time, we call it win time, which is whatever I need. And the second grader doing it for an hour a day, third grader doing it for 30 minutes a day, and then any other minute that they can fit in. I have one teacher, she's doing it 10 minutes between one, the end of one session and lunch and they're being very intentional with that, very prescriptive work. We're using the data that we get from ANET, ZERN, and DIBELS to give the students whatever they need. And it's very prescriptive to that specific student, third grade teachers, they split the students like, "Hey, I'm taking this one because they need this, you take that one." And they are working that. I also ask the teachers coming back from Christmas break to add that to their lesson plans so that when I'm in there, I can help a little bit, you know, Ms. Baker can help a little bit, to give the kids whatever they need. So, that's working really well. We did a push, some of the teachers were like, "I don't know, we've got time." I'm like, "Let's make time and see how it goes." The week following that, we talked about, you know, how did it work? Just tell me how it went, tell me how I can help. And they were like, "Oh, gosh, it's amazing." So, the teachers, after they made it happen, they just forced it to happen, they realized, "Oh, wow, this is amazing." So, they're really being very intentional and prescriptive. It's not just time to catch up on the test, it's not just time to work on extra work. It's not just, "Okay, you did all your work, now you get game time." It's very prescriptive to that student. So, your higher-level students, they're being given higher-level work, work that meets their nature. Lower-level students are given work specifically on their weaknesses to help catch them up. So, those lower-level students are getting that time every day, they're getting the time with our reading interventionist every single day, they're also getting small group time with their teacher. So, at a very minimum, they're getting about an hour to even possibly an hour and a half of very intentional time on their biggest points. And so, we're hoping, we're hoping and we're already seeing good results from that and we've only been doing it two weeks now. We've been doing it very intentionally too. The first week, they were like, "What do we do?" And so, we got it rolling really well. I met with every teacher individually last week and every teacher had great feedback from us. So, we also are very intentionally placing the paras in certain classrooms based off of specific student needs. We've got some classrooms that have higher number of students with more intense needs and so, we asked the teachers, "Where do you want a para? Where could you use a para the most?" And we redid the para schedules to fit those needs. Those again are based off of, we use the data to drive what we work with the kids on while the paras are in there. We started, we opened our library back up and we started doing the library once a week. The kids were so excited that they got to take a book home and check the book out. So, it was really fun to see the kids go in there and be excited about books, getting books in their hands. And I said, "Hey, if it works really well and they're just reading, 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 we'll do it two days a week." And with that, the library, we also revamped our A R schedule so that when the student meets their A R goal, they get rewarded immediately. In the past, we waited till the end of the nine weeks to reward. Now, when they meet their A R goal, they take a test that gives them that goal. When they meet their A R goal, they get rewarded then for every three points, two and a half points for the second graders, but for every three points above that, they get another treat, another treat, and then at the end of the nine weeks, everybody that's met their goal gets the big prize. So, the first, the third nine weeks, we're doing Viking Pack Wednesday for the big prize and in the fourth nine weeks, we're going to do a picnic in the park for the prize where we all walk to the park. So, stuff that the kids have said that they wanted is what we're rewarding them with. I developed a literacy leadership team to work with me alongside my regular school-level leadership team, the district, the literacy leadership team. There's two ladies that are very well-bursted in literacy and they are also, they love just digging. And so, they're helping me gather materials right now on what does master level work look like, what does basic level work look like so that we can put that before the students. To bring the parents in, we're sending home the passages weekly, that's mandatory. It was just whatever the teacher was doing, it now, I'm like, everybody send it home every week with a note that lets the parents know, "Hey, this is for extra practice, shouldn't only take two minutes of your night, but just let your child practice reading to you every single night." And then, also, that's my last point. Ms. Baker and I, to tackle all of the pieces, like we just decided to look at and conquer our time. So, she now spends her mornings in the classrooms with the new teachers, the brand-new teachers. I've got several, three, straight out of college. So, instead of just kind of letting them figure things out as they go, I put her in there and she bounces between the unlevel morning and just tries to help them figure out like what does high-class instruction look like. She's model teaching, she's helping them figure out what grouping would look like, what proper grouping should look like, helping them figure out how to meet the sped students' needs, what that looks like, how to scale it back if you've got a child on a kindergarten level but in a third-grade class, you know, how do you still teach that child alongside teaching your other students? So, she's in there working with them while I'm working with the more experienced teachers. So, I can kind of bounce between more of them for less time. So, I probably spend more than three minutes, but...
And Ms. Gilchrist, I think we've discussed today that each one of you guys got something in place where if you recognized a weak teacher, you're able to go in, put measures in place to try to, you know, build that up.
Well, we're doing the same coaching cycle that Ms. Smith talked about and the teachers are aware of the coaching cycle and it's not a "I got you," it's a "I got you." And we're just doing this because we want to refine our skills as a teacher, weak or strong.
And that coaching cycle was Charlie Amos from the high school did this with all of our principals and instructment coaches so that they could implement what he was doing at the high school because he was seeing such success with it.
So, how do the teachers, do you have any feedback as far as the teachers, the coaches coming in and working with the teachers?
The surveys are due tomorrow. The surveys are due tomorrow and that is a question on the survey is, you know, do you get, how many observations have you received? Do you get feedback from your school leaders? Does the feedback help you improve your practice? Does anybody follow up with you? Is there anything else you want to tell us? So, I'm anxious for this to be in tomorrow so that we can look at that result. So, I'm hopeful that it's positive and if we've got some feedback that we need to work on, then we'll tweak and make some adjustments there. But we want teachers to feel supported and feel like they've got people behind them trying to help them. We'll see and I'll give, I'll share all that with y'all when I get it.
Let me ask you one more thing. As far as the, you know, the teachers themselves and the goals that they set, I'm not really big after I was testing and gathering that, but I know it's something that we have to live with. But it seems to me that in a lot of ways, we're trying to make teachers be these cookie-cutter and everybody teach exactly the same and the teacher itself can't express their own individuality in their teaching. And through the years, I always thought individuality in teaching was a good one to have. But now, it looks like the only way we can teach is you do it this way, this way, and this way, or you're not going to be able to do it. And I don't, is that just something that we have to learn to live with because of the State Department or is that something that we can work with within our own system?
I think that the State Department...
To let them have their individuality?
They give us the curriculum. And of course, we've been through a, "Let's read it like it says and teach the word with fidelity, do it with fidelity." Now, we've moved from the fidelity because, yeah, it felt very cooker, cookie-cutter-like. And so, now it's more teach with integrity, so that's where this common planning is, is that we come in and we say, "Okay, as a group of teachers, let's do this with this activity, let's do this. I would like to, you know, share this information, maybe we could do these activities or give these choices to students." So, they're planning those activities so that they, and I would think, a lot of them do the same thing, but you may have a little twist on the different...
Well, they're teaching more to the standard than they are to a script, you know, because every curriculum we have has a script that anybody could stand up and read, you know. So, that's their guide, but it's not, you don't have to follow that 110%. You know, you take the standard and if that script doesn't really meet the needs of that standard, then you tweak and you make that lesson your own. So, just like today, we saw campfires and tents and classrooms and students sitting around fake campfires, writing. I mean, they are making the lessons their own.
To add, I wanted to add, and it's to that exact thing, we walked in all these classrooms at the exact same time and it was obvious, because I went into the two E L A classes, I was back-to-back, they were reading the same story and they were writing with the same goal, which was helping the students learn how to cite evidence from a text. But these two teachers' approaches were totally different. And at first, because we've lived so long in the, everybody do it the same way, I was like, "They're not doing it the same way." But then, the longer I sat there with the kids, it was obvious that both of the teachers coming at it a totally different way weren't getting to the same place, which is getting the kids to write, I mean, getting fourth, fifth, yeah, getting fourth graders to have these conversations about, "On page 45, I have found some evidence that supports the claim that so-and-so is strong." Because according to the text, I'm not exaggerating, these are the conversations that the kids were having, which is why I was able to quickly say, "Everybody just carry along, you don't need my opinion on this, you know, keep doing it." So, while the goals are the same with the standards, even today, within 10 minutes, I was able to see two teachers of the same grade do something really different with what they were doing.
And what I've seen too is their individual styles, they try to one-up each other. And so, they're like, "Oh, you got a tent in your room, just wait." And this one down here might, you know, blow up something, you know. So, it's, they're still able to express themselves individually.
And I walked into a science lesson and the science lesson was on the, I guess, the properties of water and how, and so, they were building boats for gingerbread men and the gingerbread men probably weren't in the curriculum, but just because it's Christmas time and they were working in groups trying to figure out how to build a boat out of coffee filters, fruit loops and what else? Maybe in coffee, like there were rubber bands or something to get the gingerbread in to float across the water in these little containers that they had. And everybody did it differently. So, I knew that that was part of a curriculum standard, but they improvised with the gingerbread men. It's so fun.
And one thing I can say is I went into a teacher's room, who's one of our new teachers, and they were teaching a math lesson and then I stayed in there 15 minutes and then I popped in over and she was struggling a little bit, but then I popped in over to another teacher who has been there, you know, several years and taught that curriculum. And I was like, "Hmm, that's good, I need to bring that back to this teacher." So, sometimes us going in as leaders observing, we get great ideas from strong teachers to bring back to other teachers to support them more, so...
Did that answer your question? You answered your question? All right. Okay.
So, I'm listening, it sounds like we're getting away from teaching the test.
It's, you're teaching the standards. And so, what we really have to hone in on is we have curriculums that are tier-one, like the state tiers the curriculum because they have to have these components. And then, here is the test. So, how do we match up what's in the curriculum with what's on the test to make sure that our kids are prepared for it? So, we're not teaching the test, but we're teaching the standard so that they can perform on their own on the test.
We want them to be able to, no matter what is presented.
Because you don't know what reading passage is going to be on the test. But if you're working with passages that are grade-appropriate passages and you're asking the right questions and the students are doing the thinking and the cognitive lift, then when they get to a passage on the LEAK test, they're not like, "Oh, my God, I've never seen anything." So, that's why it's so important that we teach the right curriculum with the right standards. It's just the method, what you're doing and how you're doing it can be, can be your personal, your personality.
I am speaking for Ms. Lana Gregory. She had written now just about an hour ago. So, she's nom and so, I told her, I said, "No problem, send me your notes and I will read them for you." So, and I heard her speak today from her heart on this, so I don't want to really read a script, but she and Ms. Rushing, who is her sidekick, literacy integrations, this summer, they set out on their schedule. They knew that literacy was their biggest problem and the students are struggling to read, just like the other two ladies said, they can't, they can't perform well in any of the subjects. So, this summer, I don't know if you remember me talking about our intensive intervention piece that we did this summer, they were witness to it and so, they thought, "Okay, we've got to do something similar throughout the year because it made such an impact." So, they spent all summer blowing my mind with a schedule and so, that every teacher in their school stops at the same time every day, 3:00, and they provide their accelerate time. And they got with their interventionist, Ms. Ainsworth, and with the new schedule and they set aside that accelerate time, which consists of students greet on their level and their needs, like the other two ladies talked about. And then, Ms. Ainsworth, their interventionist, met with the staff so that they could really... fine tune and tailor the needs that those students need. And so not only, I'm going to add a little bit to this, not only did they group the students, they grouped their teachers based on the teacher content knowledge. So if they had a teacher, they just shouldn't put anybody with somebody teaching phonics. So they took teachers who were very skilled in teaching phonics and put them with kids that needed the basic level of phonics. They took teachers who were very skilled in math and math concepts and put those with kids who really needed conceptual knowledge of math. So they really, they grouped their teachers, but with, and put them with the kids based on their skill base. They made a shift, a big shift in special education, Ms. Meredith, if you want to chime in. Ms. Meredith and I meet with Ms. Gregory, Ms. Rushing, and the two special education teachers there on a weekly basis, it is weekly, deliver tools.
It's weekly.
It's weekly, yeah, it's weekly. We meet with them, and our goal has been to have our sped teachers teaching the content and not just doing tests, you know, and makeup work, which has been typical of your content mastery centers. So they're actually teaching the tier one curriculums in their special education classrooms, and her two ladies are amazing, I have to say. And so she says, we have some very talented and capable teachers that are shifting to teaching lessons on accommodated levels and front loading students for their own level lessons to be more successful in their regular education classroom. So they're making a huge shift with their special education population, which is that super subgroup that we talked about, and those progress points that we talked about that we're aiming to get.
And Kim, I think we discussed, even though we know that you're at the fourth and fifth grade level, those two grades will be tested, you guys are putting whatever measures in place to make sure that it's not a problem, not an issue, whatever manpower we need, you guys have open lines of communication with the superintendent, directors, or whatever. So again, the goal is to make sure that everybody's aware that we're doing what we need to do based on the situation where we're at. And I kind of feel bad that you're at this meeting now because I asked you guys to come, and you had a root canal, because I would be here. So please don't hold it against me.
That speaks to her dedication.
Yeah.
But I have to say, Tim, give a shout out to Ms. Greeria, because she's even going in and helping with one of those accelerate groups, because there's so many, there's so many kids who need so many different things, and so it's literally, everybody on her faculty is pitching in, and everybody.
I don't think I'm going to take as long as they are. I will say that I'm super proud of the progress that we've made in my school the last few years, and I'm also proud of some of the things that we've been doing, and we've been sharing with the other schools as well on some of the things that we've been focusing on through ANET. We've actually been partnered with ANET two years before the other schools got involved. So we're in a little bit of a different place, and so as we're still learning, we are sharing with them to say, hey, we just learned this and it's working for us, so I want to share that. So last year, we took a big shift because we wanted to see how we could move our super subgroup kids and get them to where they need to be. So what we did was, we called it priority students focused students, and what we did is we had the teachers in all, in every class, it didn't matter if you were a core subject or you weren't elective, we had you bring in work, and we discussed each child and how, and what their progress was each week. And it wasn't anything specific, but it would be like, one of our students, one of our math teachers, she came from another district, she brought in the achievement level descriptors that we've kind of been talking about, and we started putting that in place. And so as we're bringing work in with these kids, we were noticing that some of the kids were saying, well, I have, I'm doing mastery work because this is solving a real world problem. And so when we would see them in the hall, we would say, hey, I saw your math work and that you're working at mastery level, you're going to get there, because they were a basic student. And so building relationships with kids is really big with me. I want the kids to feel valued, I want my teachers to feel valued, and that's something that I pretty much spoil them, but I want them to feel like they belong. And so one of the things that we really work on is building those relationships. Well, with building those relationships, you have to get teenagers to talk to you and to communicate with you, and how to build their growth through their learning. So this year, we were being very intentional about the work that we bring. So whenever, I think it was Mr. Randy or Mr. Bo just asked about how are we testing to the test, what we do is, we're looking at, for example, in science, twenty percent of the science LEAP test is writing. So when I meet with our teachers during Common Planning, I'll say, okay, how can we get students writing the same way and cross curricular, and we're supporting each other to build these kids up? So one of the things that we're doing is each month, I talk to the teachers and my leadership team, and I say, okay, what can we work on, what is the biggest need, and how can we get these kids to grow? So one of the things is, like in ELA, they're working on short writing responses, in science, they're doing extended responses, and they're all doing the same way that they're writing, so that we're all helping each other. I had Coach Gordon actually came and said, I'm having trouble with kids knowing suffix and prefix, and I said, I'll get with the ELA teachers. So when the ELA teachers came in yesterday, I said, I need you to help science with prefixes and suffixes. And so we try to help each other, and we try to build each other up that way. But I'm really seeing a lot of growth yesterday. It was, it was so heartwarming for me to see the teachers really saying, I'm really seeing growth with these kids, our priority students and our growth to mastery. So what I found through, I'm kind of a data person as well, what I found, whenever me and Courtney were kind of going through test scores, was that our growth to mastery kids, which are ten or less points away, we were leading two thousand points on the table. So that is our priority right now, is our priority students, which are our super subgroup students, but our growth to mastery as well. And so our teachers are communicating with the student, and they will be communicating with the parents, saying, your child is on my radar to be, they're a target student, I'm going to get them to mastery, I need your support in helping me get there. So we're pretty excited about the work that we're doing, and I'm feeling really good about the progress because I'm seeing it, I have really good people in place, we have a great foundation of teachers, and we have a great foundation of kids, this is one of the best things. One of the major things, though, I will say at the end, is the social emotional. I deal with kids that are going through changes in their life. Their brains are actually growing more than when they were born, and so a lot of things happen, you know, they're emotional, they are, you know, they want to get frustrations out. So one of the things that we're working on is MTSS works with ELA, but they also have a behavioral concept of it. And I had two of my teachers go to Common Planning and discuss restorative practices, and really looking into what can we do for students to kind of keep them in class as much as possible, and help them grow as a, as a person, and get some of these behaviors out of the way and break these barriers. And I've seen so much growth with that already, so I'm super excited about that, and partnering with them and just getting some support there with them, and some of them are receiving outside counseling through the program, through the special education program, and then we do our habitudes every month during club schedules. So we're trying to help mold them to be young adults and be ready to go when they get to high school, so. Did I take that long? Sorry, I got on a rant.
Katie, you spoke with all that confidence.
I speak fast, too.
No, that's good. That's just a big difference between yesterday and today, and that's real good.
I'm going to get yours, too. Ditto to all the things, like, you know, I'm proud of everybody, everybody's done such good job on the action plans. So at the high school, we're focusing on our EOC classes, because not every one of our classes take EOCs. So it's our English one, English two, geometry, world history, algebra one, are our EOC classes. So last year, ANET worked with the teachers in our math department, and when they did that with Mr. Amos and his support, they made a five-point gain in algebra one and almost three points in geometry with that team of people. So because our English LEAP scores went down last year, our focus this year is on instructional support with the English department. So Mr. Amos and with ANET is working with our English teachers to help them with strategies to help them improve reading comprehension and writing. We want the students also, like, if they have their target priorities, we want the students to be aware, I think it was McCann, for that on what level they're performing at. So if a kid knows they're at, well, my writing is a basic writing, well, if you're looking at student board in our Common Planning, if you're looking at those things, how can I get from, I'm a basic writer, how do I move up? So that's what we're going to do. Kids to realize what they are, not just the teachers to know, but the kids to realize themselves, oh, okay, so if I just do this, then I will be a better writer or a better math or whatever it is. We're just like all the other people, just trying to be intentional on the students we're focusing on and what classes that we're trying to support with our leadership team and with ANET coming in, so.
And hopefully the support with the writing in English will carry over to the biology, because they have to write on the biology test and the US history, yeah. And the math.
And Charlie's going, Charlie, the rates, Charlie's going to reduce that to CTE, so that when they write in CTE, they're also using the same.
Trying to connect all the classes, you know, where they're working on the same thing, not, everybody's working to do the same thing independently, so they're all kind of working to do the same things, so you know, fight these differences. Everybody else has already spoken, said all the good things.
Our major's a financial update.
Just listen under G1, I was looking at the agenda wrong somewhere, should be H, but anyway. Under G1, there's a brief summary of all the funds that are the main board that we govern with. General fund, if you look down to the last paragraph under general fund, that's kind of a brief summary. Currently, through November of twenty-three, we have a four hundred and ten thousand dollar negative balance as compared to last year's thirty-three thousand dollar deficit. And there's two big reasons for that. This year, we've already paid for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of buses as of this time of this year, whereas last year, we paid one bus in December, we paid one bus in January. So that's a little bit of time difference. We have another hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the bench.
That's a timer.
We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase on the insurance that I picked to get, so anyway, those are the two big line items that account for why there's such a big difference. Sales taxes down about five thousand dollars from last year on revenue, expenditures are up to about eleven thousand. That goes along with our normal annual step in process we have every year, so a really good deal there. Lunch is ahead by about thirty-three thousand from last year, and that's a true net number. Maintenance fund is about fifty thousand dollars ahead as compared to last year, but James did tell me that I have a root league in one of the schools, I don't remember which one, so that number might be a little bit in jeopardy. And that's all on those first five pages. And then turn to G2, that's a summary of your balance sheet for each month since G1 of two thousand twenty-four, and that just shows you how much cash we've got in the bank, the receivables, total assets, total liabilities, and where we're all netting. So I know Bo asked a lot about cash, how much money we got, we got seven and a half million dollars. So, then the last page is a quarterly recap of each fund, and I'm required to give that to y'all twice a year, probably given every quarter. And it's just a status on the current funds as to revenues and expenditures and balance. So that's all I got. If you have any questions, we're going to do that on anything.
Any question? Thank you, Adam. All right, district leaders, I'd say.
Mike. Rhonda Whitman and Cindy Fattman yesterday went to that group, and met with the four other districts that had the family engagement leadership grant. So we all gave our presentations for what we had done, so we got to see what other districts had done with their money, and so it was good to get a lot of good ideas and everybody, you know, sharing. We do have the possibility of more money after January, so we do, we continue those efforts. Sean Brown, who came back at the beginning of this, of the family grant that met with all the families, is coming in January to work with the teachers on their class and safety, safety supervision. So he's a really engaging, fun person, he'll be in on a Monday to do that with him. We got our performance profiles, same as their SPS, so Kelly is at five point nine nine, which is high proficient, they are a tenth of a point from being excellent, they had really great growth. The pre-K is five point, I think, eight nine, they're a little behind them, they're still high proficient. The daycare, five point oh nine, which is proficient, so that all rounds out, so our district's performance profile is a five, so it's a, it's high proficient, which would be equal to the, if you could have looked at it. So we're continuing to enroll, lots of kids coming in, we're excited to still have that. And everything these ladies said about the relationships and things, when Katie was talking about that with the kids, there's so many parents that you have trouble building relationships with, and I think all the work they do with these kids building the relationships is going to help with their parents, because they're going to leave there with that good feeling. And that was a commonality in everything we heard, just from all these districts, that if you didn't have relationships with your families, you weren't going to get them in, and you weren't going to have that engagement. So I think that all the work they're doing, and that, you know, that they already do with our Head Start pre-K program, it's just going to continue to bake through and help everything to break.
Oh, okay. We, well, we're working on the probability report, got it done. Debt lines, we're turning in, it's, we'll be the eighth check next week, so submit to you, we check out the insurances, and we still know that, and basically, probability report, we have to make sure that all the power ones and non-power ones use our confidence book, as far as salaries that I get from David and staff. And so they are, it's not, we have to swap them around, make those changes, because that's one of the three main components of the program. And also today, we had our district, our parent advisory council meeting, and it was real successful, we had a good turnout. We had special guests, well, not board members, it was invited by superintendent, and we were so glad to have him there.
Mike, you need the rest of you too, me just happened to be with me. Come on, this is all he's feeding us.
Yeah, he can freak, Bill, yeah. And we had our speakers today were the sheriff, Miss Waybitt, and the chief deputy, Jack McKethan, and he did a very good presentation, he gave us some valuable information about things that goes on in a marriage. I didn't know, you know, that went on. But anyway, it was very successful, and of course, we had all of the trustee folk here, they were there, you know. We have a real good team, we're closing it, group, we have, we're connected. And so we had a very good meeting, good meeting, and I'm so glad that, you know, we have that kind of relationship that we can share and collaborate and... collaborate and. But anyway, pre-K, you are, you know, ten today. But that's what basically what we always have.
Mike?
We weren't here last week, neither, last month, neither me nor Brian. We went to an Arkansas technology conference. This is the second year I've been to that. And really, this conference is geared towards IT professionals in education. And thankfully, we were able to go. We learned a whole lot about protecting our network. Last week, we got in that a state department entity and a school system were compromised. Immediately, Brian and myself dove into our network, started looking at all the traffic. We haven't seen anything alarming on our end, but we haven't received the indicators of compromise from that school district yet, but I think we're going to be, we're going to be safe. We did have some issues this week, but that all been kind of rectified. The other thing is the high school has had the opportunity to pilot a new, I don't want to say security program, but it's a check-in system at the high school where individuals are required to show their ID. It's primarily geared towards visitors on campus. So anyone who's not part of the school system, who doesn't have a student in the school system, who works for a company, maybe vending machine operator, the coke man, whoever comes into campus, it makes them scan their ID, sign in, we get a picture, it checks against federal databases for sex offenders, for people who should not be on our campus interacting with our students. So it's, so far, it's done really well. I think Ms. Garcia can testify that the front office has gotten a lot more comfortable with using it. We've worked out the bugs. We get a text message, those that are on this get a text message to say this individual's on campus. So even if they're off, the principal's not there, they see who's on their campus and they know who's there. Yeah, it prints off the badge, prints off a badge for them. So when they're walking around campus, it has their name, their picture. If we set it up who they're there to be with, it'll have that person's name. Parents come in, when they come in, we're not checking against any databases. We're just looking at that parent. They show their ID to say who they say they really are and that they have the right to check that student out. Then they go to the office and the office can see, yeah, this person's here, they're eligible to check that student out and they go. So it's just another line of security for students as they're checking.
And Mike, for the record, there's nobody being recorded unless there's reason that a recording needs to take place. But from an official standpoint, visiting the school, teachers talking, talking about their principal or whatever, that's not being recorded and used against them, right? Because some people have concern. So I want to make sure that any misunderstanding is being told so we won't have to go through all this. And when you guys finish with the pilot program, Melinda and Ren and I will look at it to see what we need to add, take away, or whatever. Because I had the chance to experience it after Mr. Barton called me and told me about it. Nick had set up the meeting. I came, I think that day, one of the individuals had something that came up as a flag, the Coca-Cola guy. Mike was able to jump, whatever's like indecent exposure, something to that effect. But he was able to pick it up, but it wasn't that person. So you may want to elaborate more to me, but I think it's something that's good.
Right. It does show if anyone similar to that has come up, in case there's kind of a question. Anyone who's in there as an administrator, the principal, the secretaries can look at that and see that, that arrest record for that person and their picture ID. And if it does not match, we clear that person. The next time they come in, we don't have to do that. We've already cleared that individual off their driver's license and they're good to go.
You use the word primarily for. When you say primarily used for, that's confusing to me. So what I mean by that is, are we using it on everybody or are we not using it on everybody? If I come in, are they going to take my ID and, or Johnny off the street, or just somebody that you don't know, how does that, how does that work?
So as a state standard, we should be showing IDs to come in to that building to say who we are. Okay? If you are who you say you are, you scan into that, you're good to go.
So what do you do with Mr. Smith, who's 72 and doesn't have a driver's license? Or how does he, does he have to get a state ID?
If, 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 he has a state ID with him, he's allowed to check in. If he is just a parent there to check a student out, they can still go to the window and say, I'm here to check out XYZ student, they still get them in. This is just another way for us to keep a record.
So a parent can check out a student without an ID?
Yeah. We're trying to move away from that.
Wait, they have to be on the student get a card?
Correct. Right. They just check out.
Office personnel pretty much know who can check out.
The badges are printed off if you're leaving, you're going in the school. Yeah, if you're visiting, you're going to be in the school, not just to check out.
Right. We're trying to get everyone, all the parents on board.
You would present your ID, it would print you, just like with St. Francis, when you go to visit, they print the little badge for you.
Back to what Mr. Glass asked about recording. When you come through those gates at the high school or do not be recorded right then?
We have cameras live all over every campus.
So you have cameras everywhere that are recording every single thing there?
It's kept for 30 days in, in the cloud.
Right, but you're not recording that conversation. You know, I mean, that's just like a home camera.
It is recorded.
No, no.
It has audio capability, but there's not someone who's.
Well, my home, my, my, my home cameras have that capability. What I'm saying is, based on what you asked me, I want to make sure that a teacher is not being recorded when they're standing next to the camera, feel like they can't say what they want to say.
But they can be recorded.
But it's not being used against them.
Correct.
I mean, there shouldn't be any reason to, but, but, but I mean.
No one has time to sit.
Me and Nikki could stand outside the gym and talk and it's being recorded.
And there are signs everywhere that tell you you're being.
Yeah.
There are surveillance cameras everywhere.
And honestly, we.
It has been for three years now.
Yeah. But we don't have, but we don't record in the classroom.
No.
Well, any of our other schools thinking this in the future?
That's why we're looking to see what the cost effectiveness of this is going to be. It works with our camera system. It's another part of that camera system. It would be nice for every, every school to have this system. Another security feature. There is, I haven't got that yet, yeah, but there is.
So the rest of our schools have the recording ability already. So this is just an add-on to it. Be like getting the software up there.
Correct.
Is this the same program that we've seen before where like if the kids are at a Friday night football game, you know, where your kid's on the bus? This program does that same thing? It tells you where your kid is?
No, no, it's not, not tracking students. This is just a check-in called guest, just to check into the school to make sure you say who you are.
Does any other director have anything? I know we hit a lot on you.
I do. I wanted to give a shout out to our junior high robotics team. They're probably less than a year old and they went this past weekend or weekend before last to Shreveport and won their regional competition and qualified for the state competition January 27th in Baton Rouge?
New Orleans.
New Orleans, sorry, New Orleans. So I mean, for them, just to be in their infancy and to perform like that, Ms. Casey Potno, who's their sponsor, puts in a lot of work with them. And I believe they're coming to the January board meeting, hopefully to do a presentation.
Yeah. What they need for state is to have presented this and it's, it's under five minutes. So they're going to come and actually show you what they're, what they do and talk about it. So when they go to state and the question is asked, have you presented this, they'll be able to say, yes, we presented to our board.
Is that, those high school students?
Junior high students.
Hatch.
Hatch, oh, yes, Hatch.
Just wanted.
Do y'all remember back when Hatch gave us the $10,000 to, to implement STEM programs? This is part of that, yes. This is part of the work that we did at the junior high and the high school.
Katie, do you have room at your school where we can take the board meeting there so these parents can come and see those individuals or yada, yada, yada? You would prefer us to just do it here?
For that? Oh, yeah. And you know what? I have a new sound system in our gym. We can use the microphone for that. Yeah, I mean, we're super excited because there was two parts to it. One part was they had to come up with a solution and they had to create something and take it with them. The other part was they created it there and then presented it. And so we're super excited because we weren't really sure how it was going to work because it was our first time, but they really showed out. So we're super excited. And if any businesses want to donate to the funding of their trip, because they are brand new, it's, it's, and it's very costly, they're going to stay in New Orleans for two days to compete, but we're super excited. It's at the Jesuit, Tulane's actually putting it on. So Jesuit High School.
Well, Mr. Counsel, before I get outside of protocol, you're the president as of now, you have an objection to the meeting being moved there? For the purposes of, does the government have an objection? I just think when kids are doing stuff, again, if it's negative, everybody know about it. When it's something that's positive, only a few people know about it. I just think those kids are going to be performing, it's only appropriate that their parents be able to see the government body along with those kids doing what they're supposed to do. Because I don't know anything about it, but I'd like for the parents to be able to know about it.
They'll be on their home field.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Hey, speaking of kids, I went by the school Monday and they could play some grass and stuff up there. And on the way out, I saw a bunch of cars there. So I got out of my truck and walked in and there was probably, Ms. Garcia, there's probably 30 kids in there on the floor wrapping presents. Student council kids, National Honor Society kids, just wrapping presents.
This time, this Shaw had asked, because they always do their big fundraisers, what they raise up the money for, for National Honor Society is to support this community with kids that need, well, families, because it's not just kids. And they take a day, they go shopping and they each have a family and they buy all the things. And she asked this year, she said, if they could have a wrapping party in the fine arts building instead of taking the, you know, a class instructor, I can do that. I thought that's an awesome idea. So they deserve that, so they spent there on Monday.
That's pretty good.
I'll use your time. I've, I've been asked to say that Homeland has already offered to help with sponsorship. So since we have some other vendors that are denied, if anybody else wants to podium, Homeland, Homeland's ready to, uh, to make this happen. Tell Richard to just calm down.
We, we'll take care of it.
We'll take care of it. Thank you.
Hey, Nikki, I had invited those football players for all district. You know, reckoning, I think your son messaged me and said that somehow they were maybe, you know, be here. But in spite of everything that's bad, I wanted to be able to acknowledge those kids for their performance. They're not here tonight. So maybe in January, football, you can kind of maybe have those guys to come here and, well, that'd be appropriate because they're at the junior high. So it'll be, you know, easily gentleman or whatever, you know, basketball, I don't know if that'll be finned or probably not. But the football players, I think they did real good based on the circumstances that we were put in, you know, with regards to the coach. So hats off to them. I didn't make it to any game. I don't have to beat up a reporter. But I just think those kids need and deserve recognition.
Thank her.
Along with.
The band, the band did good this year.
Yeah, amazing. So many good things going on. We do. Anybody else?
All right. Today is the superintendent's.
All right, so very minimal. Just want to remind everybody that we do dismiss at noon next Wednesday for our Christmas holiday. And then we will be back in class on January the 4th. Ralph stole my thunder on the robotics team. And so the only thing else I have here is I want to give each of you a, we talked about you, I want you to feel like you are welcome in our schools. And so one of the things that we've talked about today was they would love to have you come and, and, or call. So I put their phone numbers, their cell phone numbers and their email addresses. And I put a little place out here for you to schedule a visit. Please call them and schedule a visit to just walk and talk through the school so that they can show you all of the things that they just talked about and so much more. Because they, they could talk for, and so I just wanted you to have that information. I should encourage you when we get, not, not far. But just go home and let them know, hey, I would love to come and, and, and visit with you and take a tour of the school and, and see what's going on in the classrooms so that you're, you know what wonderful things they're doing. So that's, that's all I have.
All right. You guys?
Okay. I'm so sorry. Just to piggyback on her real quick, I put at the back of your packet the information for the convention. They've already released a tentative agenda that I did attach also. As it gets closer, they'll put a more in-depth one out. But if you want to attend, it's Sunday, March 10th through Tuesday, March 12th in Baton Rouge, the ground plaza. I will just need to register you all and book your hotels. So let me know, I'll refer you if you want to get, okay? And you can email me, text me, I will get you registered and do all of that. And that is all for today.
All right. You got any more comments?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Nikki, we still, you thought it, but you didn't do it. I think we had some issues with people, teachers feeling like they didn't have the appropriate way to give the input. So the superintendent, they, I think you guys need to look at this, it's 15 pages. And if there's anybody that's, I don't know if I want to say it forward or say it the way that I should professionally, but at the end of the day, this survey, I think it allows everybody who may have a problem, issue, or whatever the case may be with their principal, any suggestion that they want to do, give or whatever, it's here, it's anonymous. I think you guys are trying your best to get everybody to respond. If they don't respond to it, it's nothing else that Baron is going to be able to do because they asked for this to be done. Superintendent, and the, the name of the group, what's the name of the board?
Superintendent Teacher Advisory Council.
They created this specifically for teachers to be able to use. So if, if anybody's looking on YouTube or whatever, this is something that I think everybody need to use. If you don't like the superintendent, you don't like, whatever, you have the opportunity to say this. If you want to give input, feedback, you have the opportunity to do it. Ren is very detailed. I think, again, you know, you guys need to get with Nick to get a copy of it and look at it. I think it's very detailed and it satisfies me based on the complaints that I've had in the last six months. So I'm okay with it. It's not going to satisfy everybody and I think we're learning that, you know, some people, you just have to dip them in the water, pull them back up and hope they're different. But at the end of the day, this.
Yes, and so I'm excited. I've been watching these numbers because they, they all were shooting for 80%. With the Teacher Advisory Council, they were like, oh, we didn't, last year when I went over the results of them, they were like, that's terrible turnout, you know, that nobody participated. So we talked about ways to clear up the questions, make sure that they had the, you know, like, you know, questions to ask and the feedback. And so we set a goal, they set a goal of 80%. And I am proud to say that today we have 80% at every school.
Can't ask for the.
That's right. And so everybody who follows the directions by the end of the survey has directions to email their principal with some certain information. And so their name goes into a drawing for a hundred dollar Amazon card that they will be able to use in their classroom. So all seven schools will have a drawing, so approved by David. But like literally they were, I've been sending them presentations and today they were like texting teachers, emailing teachers, have you done the survey? Have you done the survey? You know, we really want to know and we, I can't wait to get those results back so I can share them with our school leadership teams and they can really see, are we missing the mark? Are we hitting the mark? What are the concerns? And then they can work to try to let teachers know their voices are heard and how we can work together to fix the issues that we have and where we can celebrate. And so just hopefully continue to build that trust between our administration and our teachers, so.
Can I add to that? As, as an administrator, if you got more than 50% of your faculty happy with the job you do, you done done something.
Keep that, keep that number in mind when you get these results.
If they, I mean, it's just the way it is. It's the way it is.
I'm excited.
Don't take that personally. That's just the way it is. You're at the top.
Keep that, keep that 50%. Yeah, so. So thank you, Baron, for bringing that. I did forget about that. And I will share those results with you whenever we get those all disaggregated. So I just want to make sure the principals have them and they can deal with it and then the advisory council will and they'll go over with their faculties and stuff too, so. Thank you. council will, and they'll go over with their faculties and stuff too, so, so, thank you.
Did I hear most of your journey?